Quebec English School Board Association and its nine members. I'm delighted to welcome you to this conference on school board elections. The elections are on Sunday, November 3rd. And now is the time to start getting ready. Voters need to get on the voters list and then they need to exercise the democratic vote and vote. And the best way to ensure voter turnout is to provide them with a choice. To meet talented people from all walks of life in Quebec. So tonight, our goal is to inspire those of you that are here in this room and those online to get involved. Before introducing our first speaker, however, I would like to acknowledge this English Montreal school board is located on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the county of Gagawa. We are grateful to live, learn, and work in TiO Itiaki, which has long been a site of meeting and exchange for many First Nations and is currently home to the first group of Indigenous and other peoples. As a school board, it is important that we acknowledge the historic and ongoing role of educational institutions in perpetuating injustices against Indigenous communities. We are committed to educating staff and students about the true history and current realities of the Indigenous peoples of what we now call Canada. Celebrating the cultural contributions and knowledge of the many First Nations, Inuit, and Métis communities. Listening to and amplifying Indigenous voices and partnering with local Indigenous community members. We offer this acknowledgement as a first step and public commitment to our ongoing process towards reconciliation and justice for Indigenous peoples and communities. Our first speaker is the president of the Q E S B A, Joe Artona. Joe, a criminal defense lawyer, was first elected to the English Montreal school board in 2014 and has been the chair since 2020. He has been Q E S B A chair since last year. Joe is best known for his defense of our right to manage and control our school system and for leading the fight against Bills 21, 40, and 96. We need to remind us that while speaking up for the English-speaking community is important, the job as school commissioner is much bigger than that. It is also about ensuring the school system meets the needs of students and families it serves. He pays pride, for example, in the fact the M S B under his leadership has invested heavily in renovation projects, but not enough air conditioners and increased service and offered in the classroom. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Joe Artona.
Jonathan, good evening, everyone. As the president of the Quebec English School Board Association and on its behalf and our host, the English Montreal School Board, I wish to welcome those in the room and those online on this conference on election readiness. Indira Gandhi once said, "Winning or losing of an election is less important than strengthening the country." School board elections are critical to the vitality of Quebec's English-speaking community. The reality is that school boards are the last instance of government that belong to our community and schools are often at the heart of community life. The objective of this evening's conference is to provide information about the roles and responsibilities of school board elected officials and the steps to becoming a candidate. We need talented and dedicated people to come forward who will continue to play an active role in the English community. Needless to say, we also need voters. So we have integrated a section on voter requirements and the process to make sure people are on the list. Much has been written in regards to our defense of our constitutional right to manage and control our school system and our legal challenges to Bills 21, 40, and 96. Our board cases get the headlines, that's true. But to be honest, commissioners have a much bigger role than that. And that is what I would like to briefly focus on. I will let our first speaker, Mr. Anthony Housefather, focus on our rights. Before that, let me start by providing context. There are English language schools in every administrative region of Quebec with the exception of Liddonau. Our nine school boards serve roughly 100,000 students in 340 English schools, high schools, adult education, and vocational training centers across Quebec. Each board has its unique demographics, orientations, and history. All of them share a made-in-English Quebec sensibility to delivering public education services with equal regard for the needs and wants of all students, parents, staff, and children. Our main Quebec perspective is centered on teaching the student rather than the subject with an emphasis on critical thinking, teamwork, equality, and citizenship. I can also emphasize that we place a high value on parent and community involvement. I could also point out that our school boards and the schools they operate reflect our commitment to the English language and culture within the context of providing our students with the tools to live, thrive, and contribute to Quebec. All of us want our children to have the French language skills to thrive in Quebec. We support the need to promote and protect the French language in Quebec and indeed throughout Quebec. Our English-speaking community invented the French immersion program in the 60s, well before Bill 101. And our school boards across Quebec are committed to ensuring our children are able to work and live in the French language. What distinguishes our school boards is our laser light focus on student success. The English Education Network is very proud of the fact that at 87%, our students' success rate surpasses by a full five percentage points the overall Quebec average of 81.8%. At the heart of our success are our elected school board commissioners who come from all walks of life. They are parents, grandparents, former educators, and interested community members who are on the front lines of all decisions that will affect and ultimately benefit students. School commissioners play a critical role as the interface with the broader community, ensuring that we innovate and deliver on our pedagogical promise and develop projects specific to the English network. Our school boards are as strong as the community we represent. That is why we need talented people with different skill sets to come forward. Tonight, we will learn what is involved in becoming a candidate. And then we need people to get on the electoral list and to vote. A high voter turnout will show the broader community that we value our school boards and our school system. And to put it mildly, the government does little, if anything, to encourage voter turnout. And by the end of the evening, hope for all of you to be ambassador on our behalf. I mentioned earlier Bills 101, 40, and 96. And I am proud that school boards have led the legal challenges to have those bills thrown out. But we can't do it alone. We need partners. And one person who has consistently been by our side is our first speaker. Anthony Housefather, as everyone knows, is no drinking violent. A member of parliament for Mount Royal and parliamentary secretary, he was in the Treasury Board. He has been a vocal supporter of all of our court challenges. And for this, we are very grateful. Ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, please welcome Anthony to the podium. You have the mic.
Thank you so much, Joe. And if you're wondering why I have my phone, it's because we've got a vote in the House in 23 minutes. So I may have to interrupt myself for a minute for you to all observe how members of parliament can now vote virtually, which allowed me to come back to Montreal from Ottawa this afternoon to do this and go back tomorrow morning. And it's great to be here. I see so many of my heroes in this room because honestly, I grew up in Quebec's English-speaking community. I grew up organizationally in the community and Alliance Quebec. And whether it's the Quebec Community Groups Network headed by Yubel Edvick in Sauvignon Martin-Laporte, whether it's Q E B S A headed out by Joe and formerly by Russell, whether it's the English Montreal School Board headed by Joe and all of the school boards across this province, school board commissioners, parents, like Catherine who are heads of the parents committees. This is what makes the English-speaking community in Quebec. A community would not exist except for its institutions. And there's no institution more important for minority language groups than our schools. And we are faced with the Quebec government that has shown us over the last number of years that it is very hostile to our interests. This is very unfortunate, but we can overcome. I remember one time, very similar to this, where we overcame. After the 1995 referendum, I don't think our community was ever more frightened. Whether it was the Clarity Act, it made it clear that Quebec could not separate as easily as the separatists pretended that it could. Whether it was Supreme Court reference, or whether it was then fighting back against the forced mergers. The English-speaking community made its voice very much heard. And when our municipalities were merged without our consent by the P Q government, partially certainly on the island of Montreal, in order to get rid of those pesky majority English-speaking cities that had bilingual status and that threatened to not stay a part of an independent Quebec, our municipalities were the ones that demerged in greater numbers than ever before, than anyone else. For me, since there are 16 cities on the island of Montreal, despite how difficult the forced merger rules were, and remember, you had to get 10% of the voters list to sign a register over the course of a couple of days. And then you needed to get 35% of the registered voters list to vote yes. Irrespective of whether or not you won a majority, you didn't get enough votes unless 35% of the voters list voted yes. And they left people on that voters list who were long gone or unable to vote. And we fought back. And we fought back in previous school board elections where they said that our turnout was going to be paltry. And we vastly exceeded the turnout of the Francophone boards. And here, we are going to do the same thing because we know our schools, our most important institutions, are at risk under Law 40. In order to show the Quebec government that their argument that Quebec, that English-speaking community is not interested in schools, we've got to get voter turnout. And they make it difficult for us, right? You don't get on the English voters list automatically unless you have kids in the English-speaking system. And then you get taken off the list at a certain point unless you forcibly go on and put your name down to register. We need to make sure that everybody that cares about this community registers to vote. And then everybody votes. We need to make sure we have contested school board elections so that no seat is left unfilled. Everybody needs to make sure that there is at least one person running for every open seat across this province. And that we have contests, that people come out and vote, and vote in great numbers. Because our commissioners in the last couple of years have done a yeoman's job to protect our rights. They deserve to see us coming out and voting for them to show our support for what they have done. And again, if their turnout is 4% or 5%, the Quebec government will go and say, "See, we told you these schools should be service centers because nobody cares." If we turn out 24% of the vote, or 30% of the vote, or I think our record was 40% of the vote once, people will say, "Well, that community cares about its schools." So I will do everything I can later this year, and I know everybody in this room will do everything we can to get people to go out and vote and to make sure that people know how important their candidacies are. My director of operations in my office, Chelsea Craig, is running on Joe's team in the E M S B elections. And Elliot's running. People are running, right? People are running because they know that school board commissioners have an important role in the community that goes way beyond court challenges. They make sure that our future generations are educated in the best possible way, knowing both English and knowing French. Knowing that their community is important and knowing that their schools are a key component of that. Coming out with the best education you can get out in any of our schools in any part of this province. So whatever your school board, whatever part of the territory of Quebec you are, if you have an English school board, you need to run if you are looking for candidates in your area and you need to vote. One of the things that I've learned over the course of my life as an elected official, and I started off in my young twenties as a councillor, is that every day as an elected official gives you opportunity to do things for your community. There is nothing that's more rewarding out there. There is nothing more rewarding than knowing that you made a difference in somebody else's lives. That's the lesson we teach our children in school every day. That they have to look more beyond themselves and their own selfish interests. They've got to look out for the whole community. As a school board commissioner, as the chairman of the school board, as a teacher, as a parent representative, there is so much out there to do in every school. Every day, you know you make a difference in a whole generation's futures. So I call upon the community to get out there, not only to register to vote, but if you have an interest, run. Make sure you will make a difference. And now let's talk about rights and what the school board has done. More than anyone else, over the last few years, we've seen the school board step in. When Bill 21 was adopted, it told members of our community that you could not wear a hijab, or a kippah, or any ostentatious religious symbol, and teach in a public school, a turban, a big cross. What kind of messages does that send to young people that practice a religion? How on earth does the individual wearing a symbol make a difference in terms of the quality of teacher that they are? Nowhere else in all of North America do people get told they can't teach in public schools because of their religious faith in what they choose to wear. How dangerous is that, that we live in a society where a young boy grows up wearing a turban and believing he can't teach in a public school? Or a young girl grows up wearing a hijab and feeling that she can't teach in a public school? How does that make members of those communities feel? This is outrageous. And even worse, the use of the notwithstanding clause. A clause that says that we don't care if the Charter of Rights of Quebec and of Canada protect your religious freedoms. We don't care that this right, that they were taking away this right is not justifiable in a free and democratic society. We're still going to do this, and we're going to, even worse, do this preemptively. Preemptively, so that no court can even opine on whether or not the right was taken away unjustifiably in order a remedy. This is outrageous. And then Bill 40 was about to abolish constitutionally protected school boards, the whole essence of Section 23 of our Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, that the courts have interpreted in a very liberal way to acknowledge the importance of our school boards to a minority language community without proper consultation, without caring at all about the views and the values of the minority language community. Quebec government just sought to take that all away. And then Bill 96, where once again, the notwithstanding clause was used preemptively in order to tell English-speaking Quebecers that you can no longer get a birth certificate or a death certificate in English. You can no longer do what you've done since Confederation, which is go to the properties register and record the deed of a property that has changed title in English without having a certified French translation, that told communities that have arrived in this province, knowing English fluently but not knowing French, that they can no longer get government services in English when they are readily available in that language. Too many of us who do speak French would be able to get the service in French. How does that make somebody who wants to marry a Quebecer feel? I have a friend who met a girl from Australia at a V F basketball tournament, a Macabre basketball tournament. And they got married, and he convinced her to move here. And fortuitously enough, she was born in Montreal because her father was doing his residency here when she was born, so she was a Canadian citizen. But she does not have the right to English schooling in Quebec because her parents were not from here. They were Australians that just happened to be living here. So she never went to school here. So her husband, who speaks fluent French, is allowed to get services in English, but she is not. How does that help us attract people to this province? And then when you tell bilingual municipalities, school boards that are English-speaking, that they need to internally communicate with one another in French, what logic, what possible logic does that give to the idea of protecting the French language? As a mayor of a city that was bilingual, that is bilingual, our council were all Anglophones. We functioned in English. Our city manager was an Anglophone. Our city associate manager was an Anglophone. We functioned together in English. What kind of cockamamie rules would have us have to speak to each other and write to each other in French? It makes no sense contracting with parties. When you contract with another English-speaking party, another bilingual municipality, what kind of absurdity is it that you would then have to do this in another language? That none of you speak as your normal language? Bill 96 sends such a terrible message to our community. And the notwithstanding clause being used preemptively for 21 and 96. The school board is the one that fought back. The school board is the one, including with other parties, went to court on Bill 21 and secured a very interesting and substantial victory at the Superior Court. The Court of Appeals, well, we can say that I'm not as happy with the Court of Appeals judgment as I was with the Superior Court judgment, but we're going to the Supreme Court. And both on the issue of the preemptive use of the notwithstanding clause, which is at its core, and the interpretation of Section 23 of the Charter, there are very substantial issues for the Supreme Court to consider. I am very happy that our government will be there in the corner of the E M S B and the other plaintiffs to argue that the notwithstanding clause cannot be used preemptively. This is not the role that the founders saw for the notwithstanding clause. And it is the place of the federal government, it should be the place of the federal government, to stand up for the rights of minority language communities across this country, including English-speaking Quebecers. And this will be a place where that will be done. And the notwithstanding clause preemptive use is of course also an issue in Bill 96. So that will be an incredibly important direction for the community. And Bill 40, with the school board, the E M S B led that challenge, but all the school boards have stood up and said, "No, we are not service centers." Russell showed a lot of leadership, I thought, at the time when that bill came out. I remember all his very strong words. I remember Joe's very strong words. I remember the strong words of others in the English-speaking community. And the courts said, "You're right. You're right. We see a very strong merit in this case." We believe that these school boards have constitutional protections. And I have no doubt that will make its way up at some point to the Supreme Court as well. And it's a place where I very much hope that our federal government will be there as well, taking the side of minority language communities. Because that's where we should be, always taking the side of these communities, always protecting minorities, remembering that the federal government's role is, yes, to protect French throughout the country, absolutely to protect French-speaking minorities outside Quebec, but equally to protect the English-speaking minority of Quebec. And I promise you that as long as I'm a federal MP, I will never let the English-speaking community of Quebec be forgotten. I will never let any government forget that it's equally its role to protect the English-speaking minority of Quebec. And go for it, school board. Everybody run. Everybody register to vote.
Do anyone have questions for Anthony?
Other than how I vote. This is eight minutes and seven seconds.
What are you voting on?
This is a closure motion. It's a procedural vote.
Any questions in the room or online? If you have a question online, put it in the chat and Kim will deliver it.
I see Jennifer Cream questions.
Yes, so I go over here.
You can turn on the mic there.
Hi, Anthony. Lovely speech. It was great. I think you made excellent points. Yes, get signed up, vote, everything. But we can't vote if there's only affirmations. So I think we need to go a little bit one step beyond and encourage multiple candidacies throughout the boards. So it's not a question, it's a comment, but maybe the question. I'll make it into a question pretty, because I know that you're an organizer like me. Anthony, how can we encourage multiple candidacies across the boards in the nine English boards in Quebec?
That's a great question. To me, we really want to explain to people the reward of running, which is that you're giving back to your community, which is that you're making a difference in children's lives, that every day you're making a difference in teenagers' lives, you're making a difference in parents' lives. You're making a difference in the larger community because you are stepping forward in time when we're going to be judged unfairly on how good the turnout is in this election. And of course, every word that is uncontested, the turnout will be very low, if anything, because there's nobody voting. So the Quebec government will use those numbers against us. And I think they'll use anything that's where there's no candidate will be used against us for sure, because they'll say, "Nobody even cared to try to fill the position." And the more the turnout is, the better. So I would just say that the larger issues probably are outside the urban centers. I remember very correctly, in the old days at least, that was the case. We need to go out and recruit, right? People that are running need to recruit teams, number one, to fill all the slots. And there needs to be, and there needs to be a real Herculean effort here. But Jen, I think you know as an organizer, the main thing is drive and desire. There's a lot of people who have drive and desire but don't get encouraged, and we need to encourage that. Everybody that is encouraged is much more likely to run than when somebody tells them, "Oh, you know, it's not worth you doing that. You're gonna, you know, you'll probably lose." And especially women. Women especially, over time, have been shown to be less willing to put themselves forward as men and they need more encouragement. So in order to have a large number of women running, which is really important, especially in the school system, which women, let's face it, make up most of the important, you know, important work and important nurturing work in, we need to encourage women to run. And visible minorities in every group that's underrepresented. We're lucky that we have an English-speaking community that is very multi-athletic, very dynamic. We need to encourage those underrepresented groups to run as well.
I'll just speak out.
I hear you.
Okay, I'll go. Good evening. Thank you for coming. You mentioned, okay, sorry. You mentioned Article 23. And this comes up a lot in this space. I wonder, as you were speaking about it tonight, it's, you know, you were also talking about the rights of Francophone minorities in other provinces. So those minorities, I know that there's a strong Francophone community in Alberta. I know I remember hearing about a case in Prince Edward Island where I think 39 or 49 students, the Supreme Court said, "No, you have to build those students a school because Article 23 says that their rights have to be protected." And this is more of a rhetorical question because everybody here is on the same page, like we're preaching to the choir. But I wonder if the Quebec government has considered all these attempts to take away the rights of the Anglophone minority in Quebec and putting challenges like this to try to make Article 23 not apply here. Are they concerned about what precedent like that would set for Francophones in the other provinces that they say they care about so much? Like they seem to want to have their cake and eat it too.
I think that's a great question. I think historically you've seen Quebec intervene on the side of provinces seeking to limit minority language rights. So it shouldn't be a surprise at all that Quebec wouldn't really care in the end. Because section 23, other than section 23 1A that Quebec has not opted into, which is the right of somebody whose mother tongue would be English to educate their child in the minority language, the rest of section 23 will be interpreted the same way in Quebec and the rest of Canada, pretty much in my view. I don't see courts finding a distinction between how section 23 could be interpreted. So the important thing is we have those cases as well from May on to be able to argue when it comes to Bill 40 and elsewhere, the larger liberal interpretation has been given to section 23 outside of Quebec. And that's to our advantage. And unfortunately, we've seen provincial governments throughout this country seek to limit those rights. And the important thing for me is that the federal government needs to be on the sides of official language minorities and be intervening in these cases in exactly the same way if it's an English speaking Quebec case and a Francophone outside Quebec case. We've now changed the census to make sure that we can identify the rights holders. It's a very important tool that can be used by school boards to argue, for example, you need a new school in a certain area. And I'm counting on our government, as long as there's a liberal government in power, to continue to do that, at least at the Supreme Court level in section 23 cases. And I will certainly be pushing as hard for that and pushing as hard that we intervene on the section 23 issue in the Bill 21 case as we do on the notwithstanding clause issue. And I think that's the 10 minutes and you probably should go to the next speaker.
Sure, Lester. One last question. Okay, do you have a question?
I'm just gonna be voting in 35 seconds.
Anthony, I agree with you that we need contested elections, we need races. But I just want, it's inevitable there will be some acclamations, it's inevitable. And frankly, that doesn't concern me a great deal. I just looked it up, in the last municipal elections, five, over 500 mayors in Quebec were elected by acclamation. 500 mayors on 1,200 municipalities. And the Minister of Municipal Affairs doesn't stand up and say, well, you know, because of all these acclamations, we're gonna abolish municipalities. So we need to relativize that a little bit, yes, we need races, yes, we need people to get involved. There are bound to be acclamations and frankly, we should just deal with that in the way that the municipalities deal with that.
So obviously, I completely agree with you in the sense that as a mayor, I was twice acclaimed and I much more enjoyed being acclaimed than having to run an election. And I'm sure the school board commissioners and chairmen right now would feel that way as well. All that I would say is, what we would need to do as a community is make sure we have the statistics and not allow them to manipulate those statistics related to uncontested races to bring down the percentage of people that voted. We would need to have the right way to calculate it to say, well, in the contested districts or the contested races, this was the turnout vis-à-vis the overall turnout, which obviously will be lower.
Okay, I think we'll let Anthony vote.
We're 000, so it's gonna happen shortly, please ignore my crazy gestures as I vote. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you really, Anthony, for coming all the way back from the nation's capital for dinner. I hope you took the aim. I'm on the board of the room.
I did take the aim, I did.
And it came on time?
It did.
All right, now that that's cleared up. Our next panel is composed of people who are actively involved in school boards and understand the school board commissioner role. Chair, the moderator of this session will be Russell Culpman. And his panelists are Stephen Burke, who is online, who's been the chairman of the Central Quebec School Board of Commissioners since 2009. Noel Burke, who has served as chairman of Lester B Pearson School Board from 2017 to 2021. And Catherine Corcakas, who's the president of the English Parents Committee Association. As you can imagine, these people have a lot to say, so I give Russ full credit for trying to keep them in line.
Thank you very much, Jonathan, it's not on. Green is on and red is off.
That's right.
Fantastic. Who would have thought it? I just feel compelled to mention that the two Burkes are not related.
They're brothers from another.
Yes, Noel will get out his line that they are two brothers from another mother. At some point during the evening, that is also incorrect. They are completely unrelated, but we're pleased to have both of them here and Kathy Corcakas. So I've been asked to sort of moderate and ask some questions, which I will do, of each of the panelists. I'm gonna start with Stephen Burke, who has not only been the chairman of the Central Quebec School Board for many years, but in fact, has been a school commissioner for almost, this fall will mark 35 years, Stephen, right? So you began when you were... Did I get the math wrong? Stephen, we can't hear you, this is a problem.
Although I look very young, I'm in my 37th year.
37, I said 35, I wasn't that far off.
You came close.
So began with the Commissione Scolaire des Courants in Quebec City. So Stephen, I'm glad you tested that and we can hear you. Now, I was supposed to ask a series of questions, but in typical Stephen Burke fashion, he has a few remarks he'd like to make. And because I'm very, very respectful of the chairman of a school board, Stephen, do you have anything you'd like to say in response to my first question?
I would certainly indulge in some words, yes, yes. So I can begin. Well, ladies and gentlemen, first of all, apologies for not being in Montreal. Quebec City is such a beautiful city, I try to stay here as long and as often as I can. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, to be or not to be a school commissioner. My name is Stephen Burke and I am completing my 37th year as a school commissioner. 11 in the French confessional system and 26 in the linguistic non-confessional system. For the past 14 years and a half, I've been the chairman of the greatest school board on earth, the Centre du Quebec. That's why I'm not in Montreal. Any reaction on that? Do I believe, do I believe in school boards? Yes, passionately. Do I believe that anyone can be a school commissioner? Yes and no. Let me explain. If your only motivation is your own child or children, I would say that you are likely to not be the type of school commissioner that will enjoy the many hours spent on discussion, policies, bylaws, motions that aim to serve all the students and not just your child or children. School boards need to cater to the needs of all. Personal agendas should be left at home. Being a school commissioner does not bestow upon you any special rights or powers over your child's teacher or his or her principal. The Education Act is quite clear. The only member of the school staff accountable to the Council of Commissioners and not to any individual commissioner is the Director General, period. Principals, teachers, professionals, and all other personnel are accountable only to the Director General. If any of you are fans of Dwayne Johnson, you will recall his famous one liner as a professional wrestler, Know Your Role. Being a commissioner will take up some and possibly a lot of your free time. Meetings, school board and school events, documents to be read, ad hoc committees, they all come with the territory. Each commissioner represents his or her community. But attached to that function is a very important fiduciary responsibility. Most decisions of council imply the spending of public funds entrusted to you. Each vote is casted and recorded and electors are entitled to know on what basis these votes were taken. You are accountable to your electors. It is serious business. Commissioners learn rather quickly that students, schools, staffs, and regions are not all the same. Budget allocations need to take into account the notion of equitable distribution rather than equal distribution. And on a very personal note, I believe the school board elections are best held when candidates present themselves with the sincere intention of serving their community to the best of their ability. Our children deserve men and women, who are, pardon me, men and women who can present a positive vision of what they wish to achieve as a school commissioner. There is no need for nasty political tactics. Our children deserve better. If you believe that you are the best candidate, strive to show it in your behavior and let your words, actions, and attitude confirm it. Am I naive? I think not. I was able to last 37 years without anyone ever running against me, French or English. I'm not smart enough to be a crook, so. But honestly, you will not do that, there's no other level of politics that would allow that. I'm very careful when I meet minister because I don't think that he'll get that record. In closing, make sure your name is on the electoral list. Stay informed, run if you wish to. But most of all, vote. Thank you.
Stephen chairs a school board which covers a territory the size of Spain. And so there are tremendous challenges with a territory that large. And I think it's a testament to his devotion and community commitment that he served as long as he has as a school commissioner, so thank you for that, Stephen. Catherine, you are not a commissioner, you're the president of the English Parents Committee Association. You, we sat as members of various committees together. You've been very active on, if we were speaking French, I would say the national stage. But I'm speaking English, so I would say the Quebec stage. You've been very active with the ministry and all sorts of other committees. And you've been active at your board. From the parent's perspective, what do you think the most important role is for parents in the upcoming school board elections?
I think it's important that you want to run, that if you're somebody that thinks they want to change something, they want a different direction, they always wondered like, why isn't it like this? I wish it was like that, we're focused on the law thing. I think parents need to run. And I think that if they don't have the time to run, I think what they have to do is make sure they go out to vote and speak to their neighbors. Because it is the only institution we have and it's important that we protect it because we don't have anything else, right? And on top of that, it's our children that are being educated. So Russell alluded to, you know, sitting at national tables, yes, I do. And many times, myself and Q E S B A are the only voices around that table, fighting for our rights. And you see if people are not listening, we fight hard. But what I'm saying is, we're doing it for our children and our future leaders, so we have to care. And we have to show up. And it's not enough just to like complain and go on social media and write a blog post, this is changing. What you have to do is put your money where you're about this. Don't be intimidated, because I feel like this whole thing is very intimidating. You guys have been talking about like being a commissioner and, you know, or accolades. Not everybody's a lawyer, like you can be the chair of a school board without being a lawyer. You can be a commissioner without being a lawyer or a criminal lawyer. So then it becomes super, oh my god, okay, well, why? Yes, you can, because your children are in the system, you want the system to go a certain way. You're a stakeholder and you should have the right to do it. So I think that parents should definitely show up, definitely be contenders as commissioners. And aside from that, I think that we need to do everything in our power to talk to our community, to show up and vote. It's very important.
So Anthony alluded to it in his remarks, but parents of students registered currently in English schools are really the only group that are automatically on the electoral list, right? If you have a child in the system, you don't have to do anything else. So there's a pool there, you know, there are almost 100,000 students in English schools. There's a pool there of, in theory, 200,000, probably more, with les familles recomposées, over 200,000 electors who are right there, you don't have to do anything else. The rest of us, if your children leave, once your children leave the school or the schools, the English public schools, you have to re-register. If you're not automatically registered, you have to sign up again. But there's a fairly significant pool of sort of captive electors there already. And it seems to me that part of the illness, part of the illness is on those parents to get out and vote in great numbers.
Yes, and Catherine has played a very important role in talking about the election, to mystifying what it is to be a commissioner and not making it seem so overwhelming and so something unattainable. I think that if you want to do something, you can. And I think collectively as a community, we need to make these positions, these leadership positions attainable and not so unattainable, that's all I'm gonna say, it's important.
Noel, you've had quite a varied career, but most of it, if not all of it, in education. You've been an educator, you're still an educator at McGill. You've been a school board elected official, a chair. You've been a school board administrator with one of the best school boards in the...
The best.
The best board.
Notwithstanding Central Quebec.
Exactly. Noel was with the New Frontier School Board. But you were also in the Ministry of the Quebec Civil Service, assistant deputy minister at the M E Q for the English speaking community. So you've got this wide range of experiences, having sat on so many different aspects. How important are elected school board commissioners in governance with all the experience that you've had?
I think they're essential in two ways. One is their role in maintaining the school board's fiscal and financial responsibility, those obvious things that the government is wary of. But more importantly, to understand their role in the broader community. So my wide experience brings me to suggest that at this point in time, with the current politics and the current pressures on the English community, to raise the profile of the Council of Commissioners and understand that it's not just parents who elect commissioners, it's taxpayers throughout the province. We all have school taxes. And I think it's incumbent on both the choir, as we mentioned earlier, that's in the room, but also on the Council of Commissioners to identify areas of need. One of the big experiences we had at the Pearson Board was a realization halfway through our mandate that we were woefully underrepresented in the BIPOC community. It was stimulated by a series of events that were unfortunate and unacceptable. And we invited as community reps, people from those communities who have subsequently been reelected. There are also other needs and demands of each and every school board that require different kinds of expertise. Parents have vested seats at the school board, thanks to changes in legislation over the years. And I think it's incumbent on us to look at quality candidates. And I'm not suggesting that current candidates are not quality candidates, but people in the community who are not only parents, but who have a vested interest and are well known and experienced. And I feel this would really raise the profile of... And I, I feel this would really raise the profile of school boards for voters to take it more seriously.
So Noel, as a school board chair, and as someone who, again, was sort of at the second highest level of the Ministry of Education when you were there. Could you talk a little bit about the function of an elected council of commissioners in relation to the government of Quebec?
Where to begin?
You know, I, I called Noel this afternoon, and I said, there's going to be a number of questions I'm going to ask. And he says, so don't ask me anything you like, I can answer anything.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Don't worry about it, you don't have to tell me what you're going to ask.
He's asked none of the questions. I, I think that, you know, i- in the, in the government, departments are typically referred to as services. You know, and this has become an obsession now with service centers and school boards. But they are serviced to the public, and they are serviced to the council of commissioners as well. And working internally in the ministry, especially in the senior administrative levels, it became clear to me that by and large, the public servants that work within the ministry, and I'm not talking about the people that are attached themselves more politically to the public perceptions, are devoted to serving the community, have a lot of respect for the institution of a council of commissioners, for democracy. And, you know, so it's really, if there's a fault here, it's, it's a political and politician's fault, not that of, of, of the public servants. And I think that, you know, the role of commissioners ha- has to also be at that community level. It takes us away from the perception that school commissioners, council of commissioners is a closed shop, and it's only for parents. And I, in all due respect, that is the general perception. Because it's typically mostly people who come up from governing boards in the schools and other committees who, who come into play. And this, that's, that's perfectly rational and justifiable. But it is important that people like Mr. Burke online, who understands finance very well, for example, is, is, is a, is a commissioner. Somebody who understands special needs as a commissioner. Somebody who understands the issue, as is what I stand here at the E S P about, what is immersion program? What, you know? And is a high-profile person for French immersion, a French immersion teacher? Or a French immersion principal? Or is it somebody out in the community, like a house father or somebody else, who, you know, who's passionate about that thing and known for those things?
I guess it
Did I skirt that?
Yeah.
I wasn't trying.
I was wondering, if, if, would you talk a little bit about the council of commissioners at an elected level of government? Because that's what we are.
It is.
That's what you are. We talk often that we have three levels of, of elected government in Quebec. We talk about, of course, the federal government, the House of Commons and Senate. We talk about the provincial, national assembly, and municipalities. But school boards and school, and council of commissioners are an elected level of government. And, and so I, I guess in part, I'm trying to see if, if you view a council of commissioners as a bit of a counterweight to some of these decisions that are made in Quebec City. Not, I'm not talking about particularly political decisions about bills ninety-six, twenty-one, forty, etc., but even more sort of local matters. Is there a value to have that counterweight there as an elected level of government? To be able occasionally to put back against the government of Quebec and say, you know something? We don't, this make, we don't think this makes sense for us.
Yeah, I, I think to go back to the, the relationship with the ministry and council of commissioners, there's a rule, and you know this as a, as a former M N A, that in, in, in the government process and communication process, admin speaks to admin and elus speaks to elus. And we as council of commissioners, in general, in the English community, under, under, do not take that opportunity seriously enough to get on the phone to an M N A, even if they're in the CAC, and even if they're, all of these policies. Get on the phone to your local M N A, see yourselves as commissioners for a community, not a school, because it's frankly too much of that. I'm the commissioner for X high school, and I'm going to make sure that they have air conditioning, to go back to earlier, but that they represent the community. As we said, taxpayers elect them, and it's essential that, that elu, elu connection is made. Because if we're going to crack it, it's not by attacking a one-man government. It's by intervening on a regular basis. And one of the lessons I, I learned very well is that, you know, M N As and there are politicians in the room, foreign politicians in the room, you get ten phone calls, right? And nine of them are bitching and complaining about something, and one of them is somebody saying, hey, you're doing a good job there. You, you wouldn't believe the mileage that you get out of that. And so improving relationships between elected school board officials and elected public officials, I think is essential, as I said in an interview earlier this evening, to the survival. Like, it, these are the last institutions that we control. If we lose control of them, we're just, you know, floating in the wind.
That's a better answer, Noel, thank you.
Thank you. You took it a little prompty.
You know, I, I, speaking as a director general, the council of commissioners plays a really important role. And, and occasionally it's a buffer role, right? I have already said once, may have to say it again, to the deputy minister of education when I'm being told to do something or go in this direction. And I, I've, I've already had occasion to say jokingly, because that's the way I like to pass some of these messages. I say, you know, Madame Marave, je ne travaille pas pour vous. I don't work, yeah, I do. I don't work for you, deputy minister. I work for the council of commissioners. And that's a really important distinction, because now under school service centers, the directors general of those sixty-some-odd school service centers do work for the deputy minister. And, you know, when you work for someone and they say jump, the tendency is to say how high? When I'm told to jump, my tendency is to say why? Does it make sense for me to jump? So that's, you know, that's a, a distinction. I want to, I want to get to Stephen. Stephen, I, I'd like to ask a very personal question. Why did you decide thirty-seven years ago, almost thirty-seven years ago, to run for the school? What, what motivated you? What prompted you? You were a, you were a, you, you had a full-time job, you were a, a, a civil servant. You had to be prudent, right? I mean, you worked for the government of Quebec. You were a parent, you had children in schools, you were a busy person. And that old adage sometimes is, if you want something done, ask a busy person, right? So what, what prompted you to, to run for the Commission scolaire des Courants thirty-seven years ago?
Well, we had a, you know, the way it worked in, in the Catholic system, the special system was, we had an elementary school in the Dicouvres territory, on the Dicouvres territory, and we had a high school on the Commissariat Catholique du Québec. And a friend of mine had been the youngest chairman of the Commissariat Catholique du Québec, I think in, 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 in the entire history of the C C Q. Dennis Dawson, later became a Liberal MP and, and senator, and this year had the opportunity of being the grand marshal of the greatest St. Patrick's, St. Patrick's parade in Quebec City. But that being said, I, I wanted, I, I was, I wanted to have someone on that board. They were all Francophones, very nice people, very different from some of the Francophones that lead us now. But a, a couple of them were open to the English school. And I would go to the meetings and say, we have no representative. So we tried a couple of times to get someone elected. One time, it, it was, it was sad, because, you know, the school boards have, in the French system, have this, this uncanny characteristic of sometimes being very, you know, in what, in the words, the French word, patronage. I know you, you know me, rub my back, I'll rub your back, and, and things like that. And of course, they didn't want somebody new, but we, we ended up getting someone elected of all people in the same riding as Paul Begnay. Some of you are, know about political stuff in Quebec City. Paul Begnay, one of the strongmen in, in, in the, in the Parti Québécois. And I, I think he was even minister of justice, close to Mr. Levesque or Parrioz. So anyway, make a long story short, the other commissioners were scared stiff of this guy. They didn't want this guy amongst them, because they said, he's, it's like having Guy Lefleur playing on a D W team. I mean, he's going to be too, too, so it's too strong. So they elected our, and I won't mention her name, but they elected her. Poor, poor, poor. She would come to my house after every meeting, and I'd meet with another guy, we, we two guys, two, two parents who pushed her. And, and in fact, Begnay told her publicly in a public, a public assembly, it, it's not against you. It, it, it's against the system. So, so she did her two years, I, I commend her. And then finally, there was an election in my ward, and when I say being nasty, they never told the, the incumbent that I was interested. Had I known, I would have given her a call, I would have said, look, I, I'm running, you're, you're not running anymore. And anyway, there's a tendency for sometimes people to, so I'm not a claim, I don't run. So I ran and I won, and it was very interesting, because Dicouvres was a very, very big school board. And I learned a lot of, a lot of stuff, which I brought over to the, to the Centre du Québec when, when we were created. So that's basically it. I felt we needed a word to, we needed a place at the table, and we finally got it. But I must thank the then-president of she called me, and then another commissioner called me, and they said, we'd like to have you on board. So I ran, and, but I was ready to, 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 to fight for it in, in, in a fashion that would have been very gentlemanly. I would, I was going to say, the Anglophones need a vote on this table. There were no linguistic commissioners at that time. So basically, it was something that I felt that I, I should do. I've never regretted it, it's been, it's been a wonderful thirty-seven years. And, and the last twenty, the last, since nineteen ninety-eight, the last twenty-five, almost twenty-six, has been even greater. Because we have our own school board, we have a wonderful territory. I've got men and women on that council that are dedicated, we've got former teachers that join. It, it's an extraordinary, an extraordinary time of my life, but now it's time to go on to other things. But I, I enjoyed it, and I'm happy I started with Dicouvres.
We wish you another thirty-seven years successfully, Stephen. Catherine, as parents, what do you see as the value of having a local level of elected governance from our community? Because, you know, there, there, there could be other models, you know? The, the model in the school service center is that, that those members of their board of directors are chosen, some from electoral colleges and et cetera, but there's no direct voting, right? So what, what, what value did you see as a parent and the head of, of the English Parent Committees Association, having an elected level of government, an elected level of council of commissioners?
I think that you get more of a representation, and I think you get a bigger voice. And, you know, when I look at parent governance, many times you won't see a lot of minorities around the table. You won't see a lot of cultural communities around the table. So it's important, when you have the ability to vote, that's what it gives you, it gives you the opportunity to, to pick people who you think represent you, represent what you, you know, what you'd like to see in your school board, what you'd like to see happen. So that's what it does, it gives people a voice, and it gives you the ability to say, well, you know what? I put you in, I didn't like what you did, I'm not going to vote for you again. So you have that kind of like, like power, quote unquote, to be able to, to move things in a direction you want. And the other thing is, I've seen the French system, right? Like, I work with my colleagues, and you don't have this, you know, the, the, the whole thing was like, oh, parents were going to have it, and they were it's really not, it's more smoke and mirrors than what it actually is. So I'm just saying that this is, for me, when I'm looking at representation in governance, it's a much more, if people turn out and vote, and people put their candidacy, that's the other caveat. If it's always the same people, then what I'm saying makes no sense. But if people put their names to the ballot and turn up to vote, then you really have the power to change and move the needle. Because the truth is, school boards and schools are there to service the community that they serve, right? They're not there to service the council. The council is there to service the community it serves, and the council is supposed to represent the community. So that's why it's super important that not only you put your name forth, but that you vote into your points. Parents have skills, so they can be lawyers, doctors, and be parents that have children in the school system. I would like to see more parents in governance. It is super important. Having sat on every level, at the highest level, I can tell you, the parent voice needs to be there. It's our children, we are the stakeholders, it's their future, it's important.
So I mean, is it safe to say that, that, that you think because it's an electoral process, because we're all participating in it, or we have the option to, that there's a greater sense of ownership there, that, that?
Absolutely, and you're, you have proximity. You can call your chair, you can go to the council, you can submit a question, you can, you know, there's many ways to communicate and to, to share whatever it is you feel like sharing. You have different forms of governance, so it's very important. And yes, there's a proximity, and, and there's also an understanding. I want to say this, okay? Because sitting on those, at that government level, when I say things like, it would be fun if we had that, the, the workshop that you promised me in English for special needs parents, it would be fun if it happened. They don't understand that. Whereas I don't have to, you know, convince Mr. Otona that we should have an English workshop for special needs parents in English. See what I'm saying? Whereas I have to convince members or get them to think, oh, wait, oh, oh yeah, there is an English-speaking community. Oh yeah, there are English parents, oh yeah, there are English students. So the, the reflex is not there, that's why it's important, that's another.
No, I, I, I think that's, that's very true. You know, I, I've seen the changeover from what was then the Fédération des Commissions scolaires du Québec. And what was, you know, now has become the Fédération des Centres de Service scolaire du Québec. And the Association of Directors General and Assistant Directors General on the French side. So the, you know, the, the governance on the French side has completely evacuated their own boards of directors, completely evacuated. Those boards of directors exist, there, there are people, they have power theoretically, they have certain responsibilities in the law. But in practice, the level of the chairman of the board of the Centre de Service scolaire de Montréal is absolutely nowhere in the governance structure of the Ministère de l'Éducation, nowhere. And so, you know, all we see is Directors General, Assistant Directors General, and the Fédération des Centres de Service scolaires du Québec, which has by and large now become almost a service arm of the Ministère de l'Éducation. It is not an advocacy, advocacy, advocacy group, in the way the Q E S B A is still an advocacy group for our community. So I think that's an important distinction. Noel, you alluded to some of this, but, you know, I wanted to perhaps just ask you about what are some of the wider responsibilities of, of, of a school commissioner or a chair? You know, you alluded to the fact that, and, and I've seen this in, in school boards, commissioners get elected from a ward. They, I think their first tendency is to say, well, I'm the commissioner of this ward, representing this, these schools. But you alluded to it, you said it, in fact, of course, commissioners have a broader fiduciary responsibility to the entire organization. So, you know, what are the, what are those wider responsi-? How important are those wider responsibilities, rather than just looking at it, that I represent my ward, and I represent my school, and this is my school, and et cetera?
Yeah, well, generally, I, I think it's the responding to and being responsive to the community they serve. I mentioned earlier that unknown good relationships that can be made between administrators and schools, schools and school boards and the ministry, but also the relationships that I alluded to with respect to political connections and the need to, as you said, when you have power, the need to exercise it. And I think E M S B and Joe have demonstrated this well. We did as well and continue to do so in passing motions and communicating those motions on behalf of an elected body, respected by the politically elected bodies, because more often than not, we'd get a callback, you know? Or discreetly through the secretary general, what's this all about? What are, what are the expectations? What are they looking for? And so that's really important, to exercise that authority, and as I was suggesting in the beginning, raise the profile of the council of commissioners to, to have a motion around such a thing as the incompatibility of not providing training in English for, for a body of parents around, I think it was special needs.
That's correct.
Yeah. About not having that and communicating that not only to the ministry but to the press, and start to, to mobil- And start to, to mobilize. And I think that, uh, that is the wider responsibility. And I think it's a responsibility that also helps, not by November, but also helps dispel some of those myths about, public myths about the importance of a council of commissioners. Because they think that all you're doing is taking care of schools and budgets and everything else. But there is that larger responsibility that we do have, that we do exercise, but I think is not well enough.
Again, using a little bit of irony, occasionally I've said to Assistant Deputy Minister uh, as Director General of the School Board, I said, and it's very interesting to watch the reaction there, right? Because then the civil servants, I, I, I agree with you Noel, are gen- generally very respectful. They occasionally forget we have a governance model. They forget it, but when you remind them of it, they go, you know, and, and, and that can be used a, a little bit of a, 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 as a shield occasionally. Convenient shield um, uh, by, by administrators of school boards. Um, do, do any of you have anything else? I'm conscious of the time, uh, before we perhaps go to some questions. Stephen, you have anything you'd like to add? Catherine, Noel?
I just say that one of, one of the great things that I enjoy doing was going to parliamentary commissions. We're a small board, so I wrote most of my memoirs. And um, you know, we, we fought, we fought for Bill Four, against Bill fourteen. He was a René Levick. René Levick gave the, the, the right to, the military to choose the language of instruction of their children. And um, the only reason we won that, I must remind people, uh, we, we did a good, good job with the parliamentary commission. But Madame de Corsi uh, said, well, uh, we'll put it on the back burner, but when we come back as a governor, we'll do what we need to do. Well, luckily, uh, they did not come back. Noel, the parliamentary commissions, uh, they're very respectful of the English minority, uh, the deputés. And that, that, that I will miss. I enjoyed, I enjoyed going to parliamentary commissions.
Uh, I'd say no vacant seats. I'd say also, uh, the more candidates, minimum two that we have, the more general interest there is. In moments where we had two candidates, we're not talking about needing, you know, ten, but where we had a couple of candidates and we had an open house or a question, you know, sometimes a debate or just a question period, tons of people showed up and asked all kinds of questions. And I think that it will immediately raise the profile and the chance of a higher voter turnout as well.
I agree, because then you also hold the people accountable, right? You get them to take positions. When it's unacknowledged, it's just what it is, right? You don't get to question, you don't get to ask, to, to push for stuff, you can't, you can't do any of that. So it's very important that we have an election.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
What was a commissioner, what was on the board of, and what's on the agenda of a typical commissioner's meeting? How much time does it take? What kind of time requirement do you ask of someone who's running?
Uh, well, I, I'd, I'd have to plead guilty to long commissioner meetings. Because my style of, of uh, council management was to let people talk and talk things through and that became tiresome for some at some times. But they are, you know, I'd say it's a good ten to fifteen hours a week for, for a commissioner. More than that, if you're chairing a committee or if you're uh, heaven forbid the chair and that's, we're up in twenty, twenty-five hours a week, really, to be real. And people have to understand that level of commitment that's required. Typically on the agenda are operational issues, which I think, you know, I, I've been suggesting there needs to be more to it than that. What's the place of, but to answer your question, uh, meetings are typically two to four hours. They're once, uh, once a month, uh, typically. And if you're on committees, which most commissioners are, there's that, a doubling of that.
Okay, so do you appoint the director general? Do you have a budget? Do you approve the budget, the strategic plan?
Yes, yes, yes.
And what do you do in terms of pedagogy?
Uh, we rely on the administration mostly for pedagogy and guidance from the, uh, every school board has an educational services department or similarly entitled uh, department. And uh, the directors of the uh, different departments, transportation, finance, ed services, student services, et cetera. Though they are responsible to uh, the Director General, this is a careful distinction, they have to be responsive to the council and to the questions that are asked about uh, how they're, how they're, you know, how they're operating and how they're meeting the objectives and goals of the current strategic plan or specific initiatives.
But there, but there's broad governance issues too, Jonathan. Yes, the council of commissioners appoints and names the Director General. In terms of pedagogy, the councils have all approved what they call the Commitment to Success Plan.
Correct.
So, so council of commissioners have, on the recommendation of the administration, identified priorities to improve the success of their students. So there's a direct involvement there. Issues like opening new schools. You know, a, a, a significant number of school boards have, have changes in demographics where uh, sometimes you have to close a school, which is a very difficult decision, very hard. But I, but I think we're all, we're all happy in this room that there's an elected level of governance that makes that decision. But it's also to open a new school. It's the maintenance of schools, where do you invest, how to invest, how best to serve schools with special needs. All of those themes on a broad level come before the council of commissioners.
Thank you for that. Are there other questions from the floor or online?
Hi, I just have a, a question about, we mentioned earlier on about uh, voting being on the list to vote. Having gone through, my children graduated a long time ago, so yes, each time I, I make sure I'm on the list. Is this the first election where there are no French boards? So is this, is, is it the only English boards are, are having elections, correct?
Yes.
So anybody in the greater community?
Yeah, but no, the, the fram is giving, we have one election. Second election.
Anybody? Typically, you can vote as a citizen in either election. Now, there's only the English system that is voting. So is the entire community still allowed to vote?
Only rights holders can vote.
Uh, no, that's not quite.
I think we'll put that question on hold because it's the subject of the next panel.
Yeah.
Really?
Definitely.
My second question is, uh, we, uh, it's very, I strongly believe in commissioners and in the English system with school board commissioners. And what I would suggest is that we as a community and as commissioners and as, I don't know who the responsible people are, uh, is to have this type of thing or training or information or things in more than, than a couple of months before or several months before it's going to happen. It's not a surprise, the elections. So I think that if, I think it's really important that we have representation and it's increasingly more important to have any community involvement and to vote. So I think it wouldn't be who has to publicize. And maybe training, or I'm not sure how to further that, but minimally, talk about it.
This has been came off of a campaign, uh, different school boards are running in the Q E S B A. You'll find increasingly information on everyone's websites about how to register and how to become a candidate across the board. So yes, this is the start of the mobilization campaign, it's the start of building awareness.
Jonathan, I just wanted to add, add one practical thing as well. You know, school boards have our share of responsibility in terms of access on the day of the election to voting locations. So this whole three-year school board runs from Grenville, Officer Hoxbury, up to Senegal, Arundel is a little higher, over to Jalié and all of the amount. It's a huge territory. But I've made it clear as Director General, supported by the Chair and the Council of Commissioners, that we're going to increase the number of voting locations. Because we know accessibility is important. You know, it, it, to ask someone to drive two hours to vote in a school board election, because the Government of Quebec, by the way, will not allow us to use any other electronic means. It's very, very difficult. So we also have the responsibility to, to increase access. But when we do so, we do so within our own budgets. So there's this innate tension in terms of investing in an election because every dollar we invest in an election is a dollar less that's available in the classroom. And that's a problem. The Government of Quebec should be paying for these elections in the same way that they pay for provincial elections and the same way that municipalities are, are assisted by the Director General of Elections of Quebec and they have a role to play there. And you're looking at your own public cloud.
Could I, could I, could I just, can I add one other thing?
Sure.
Can I add one other thing? You know, we are, we are, uh, the, the efficiency of the English, the nine English school boards is, is, is there, okay? If you take the top ten service centers and school boards in the province of Quebec, the first four or five are all English school boards. We are victims of, of the way that we manage our schools and govern them. I'm trying to tell my colleagues, I'm not running anymore. I've got someone who's very interested, he'll be a great, great, he or, well, I'm saying he, but he or she will be a great, great chairperson. It's the same for commissioners. I don't tell anybody, your time is up. I tell them, find someone to replace you, because that's important. And you've got to understand that for many, for many parents, if everything's going fine in their schools, in their child's school, they, they, you know, but if you can get good people who are willing to have a good discussion, stay positive. I, I, in my thirty-seven years, one lady called me once, she said, I heard you were retiring. I said, I'm not. But I tell you one, if I got beat by you, the kids would still be winners. Thank you.
So thank you, Catherine, Noel, Russell and Stephen. Now that everyone knows what the job is, I trust that everyone is eager to apply. Twenty-five hours, one day work a week. Our next panel, which I'm moderating, focuses on what candidates need to do during November third, election day. Participating virtually is Matt Aronson, a member of Westmount City Council. He was first elected in twenty twenty-one in a contested election. Running for city council was similar to running for a school board. And Matt has agreed to share his wisdom. In addition to being president of the Quebec Home and School Association, Rosemary Murphy is the returning officer for the Leicester B P L H P Pearson School Board. She is our expert on the role of governing elections. She will answer that question that was asked just a minute ago, among others. And finally, we have Ricardo Sivania, who is a social media guru, who has worked for the Trudeau government in a number of capacities. Matt, you there?
I sure am. Hello, Jonathan, how are you tonight? Look at that, I get to be the, the big giant head. This is a, this is a position of honor. Thank you guys very much for having me this evening.
Okay, Rosemary, I'm gonna start with you. And if there's questions, I think everyone has, how do you get on the election list? How do you become a candidate? How much money do you need to spend as a candidate? Those kinds of basic issues. So why don't you start by, how do we get on the election?
Okay, thank you very much. Judy Kelly from Leicester B Pearson gave me permission to tell Russell, you're wrong. I'll let you know afterwards.
Sorry, I always do.
Oh, was I right?
Okay. But to be, to be, first of all, to vote in our school board elections, you must be on the electoral list. We all agree to that. To be on the electoral list, if you have children in our public schools right now, you're on that list. But you should still check, please check, because we're dealing with civil servants, we're dealing with technology where you can just hit a button and you can be erased immediately. So there is a list, there is a link on the Quebec English School Board site that Kim Hamilton is putting up, where you can actually go to Elections Quebec and double check if your name is there. And for the ladies, sometimes check under your maiden name too. Okay, because usually in Quebec, we're, we, unfortunately, we're there under our maiden names. So check under your maiden name as well as married name to make sure you're on our electoral list. So children with, parents with children in our schools, you're automatically on. Anyone who is a taxpayer, anyone wishes to vote on our, in, in our English system, you can get on the list to vote. You just have to, like, what, right now, most of our school boards, and I'm sure Joe can let me know on this one, most of our school boards on your website already have a voter transfer form. So all you have to do right now is just go onto the link on your board site and fill out your voter transfers form. You can do it by actually making, scanning it, filling it out and sending it by computer, print it, fill it out and mail it to the Director General of the School Board. So you can get on our list. You can get on our list if you're a senior citizen, if you've lived in Quebec for more than six months. If you have, if, like I said, you don't have to have children in our system, but you must have children that are not in the French system. So even in, even if you have English eligibility, if you've decided to send your children to French schools, French public schools, I have to say, you cannot vote on the English side. Once your children graduate, if you want to come back and vote on our side, fill out the form, form, the voter transfer form and you're back in. But let me finish before we go with questions, okay? So anyone that has children on, in the French public system cannot vote on an English school board. If you have children in the French private system, you can. Believe it or not, you are allowed to vote on the English side. So, and people who have had their names down, if your children graduate, sorry, Russell, if your children graduate, you're still on the list. You don't have to go and reapply all the time. I mean, check, always check, but you're there. I know, I've gone through it, I've gone through it, so I know, so.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll see you in the parking lot later.
No problem.
Step outside, Russell.
In two thousand and three, the Quebec English School Board Association fought for that because after the ninety-eight elections going into the two thousand and three, I know, my kid, my kids graduated, my name was off the electoral list. I had to get back on. But we fought, Quebec English School Board Association fought for that and they have allowed us to remain on the list. So I, I check every year, but just in case, but my name is still there.
Maybe it's a question of timing.
Could be, could be. But your children who have turned eighteen, even though they've gone through every year of English schooling, will not be allowed to vote unless you, you register them or they register themselves to vote. They are automatically put on what we call the, the Quebec provincial list. But to get them back on, to vote on the English side and even to run, they have to put them, put their names, they have to register themselves to be on an electors list, okay? So if you know children eight, that have turned eighteen, that are already eighteen, if you know friends, if you know your neighbors, if you know your, your nieces, nephews, grandchildren, if they're eighteen years old, please get them to come onto the English side. Get them to register themselves to come on the English side. Okay? Okay?
So if you go to an English private school, you can get on the list as long as you're ready.
Yes, because every year, and I know Joe knows this and I know Russell knows this, every year the school board has to submit the list of all the names of the parents who have children in our schools, our elementary schools or high schools. And that list goes every year. But of course, you're always gonna have parents who come in in the middle of the school year or whatever. So they don't get on the list. That's why we have revisions in October. Now, to be a candidate, number one, you must be on the voters list. If you're not on the English voters list, you cannot, you cannot put your name forth as candidate. You gotta get on that list. To be a candidate, also you must have lived at least six months or more on your, whatever school board territory you're going to run. So if you decide to run English Montreal, you must have lived six, at least six months on English Montreal territory. If you're in Quebec City, where Stephen Burke was, you have to live six months there to vote in that or to run in. If you're in Quebec City, where Stephen Burke was, you have to live six months there to vote in that, or to run in that district. You have to be eighteen to run. You cannot be an employee of the board to run in as a, as a commissioner. You cannot have been imprisoned, basically, or sentenced to be imprisoned. You cannot have voter, you cannot have fraud, you cannot have elections fraud. These are all things that are here, and I brought this to show you. If you go on Elections Quebec, oh my goodness, Elections Quebec has everything there for you. You go on their site, they will give you a guide for the authorized candidate. I didn't make photocopies because it's thirty-three pages long. I didn't make copies of the, of the act because it's a hundred and thirty-three pages long. But it's there. They have, I made a couple of pages. It's there, it's on their site. All the information you are looking for is on the Elections Quebec site. They will tell you how to run an election. I know Ricardo probably has a lot of information about that, but they'll tell you how to run an election, they'll tell you how to raise money for your, for your campaign, they'll tell you the do's and don'ts of raising that money. They're, they're very good for that. So Elections Quebec is a very good resource for you to have in your back pocket if you're running for a commission.
Okay, before we get off the, and into the juicy part of how to be a candidate, the social media, how much is a candidate allowed to spend if you're running?
It, it's all in the act. That's one thing they do tell you. To run as a commissioner, you have about thirty-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, if I remember correctly, plus thirty cents per voter in your whole territory. To run as a commissioner, you get about eighteen, you're entitled to eighteen-hundred-and, eighteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars, I'm not saying, again, with twenty, with thirty cents per electorate. But that's up to your returning officers. They will give you all that information when you come into the office to apply. And the, the time to come in to apply or to bring in your candidacy is from September twenty-fourth to September twenty-ninth. The deadline is five o'clock September twenty-ninth. That's it. If nobody runs in a certain ward, I claim them as the returning officer for Lester B. I claim them acclaimed, or I claim an election. And then I give them all the voters. You get your whole voter list already that we send to you right away. And then when you're in revisions, which is from October the fifth to October nineteen fifteenth, the line is nineteenth, but it's the fifteenth. Anyone that has come back in, has put their name on that list, I will also give that to the candidates, so that they have all the voters in their territory. To run as a candidate, you need the support of the people in your territory. So if you're running the ward, like total division, whatever you want to call it, you need to have at least ten signatures of people who live in your territory. Now, if you want them to vote for you afterwards, you better make sure they're on the voters list. But to get them in, to get yourself signed in, you just need at least ten. I always recommend you get more than ten, just in case. You never know, someone might not feel, might not be qualified to be. Can we hold questions for after? Someone cannot, might not be qualified to get in. So it's important to get at least ten. To be the chairman of the board, you need at least fifty supporter names from your whole board territory. So however big your territory is, you need at least fifty names. These people have to have lived at least six months on the board's territory or in your ward's territory to support you. Staff can support you. They can sign supporting papers if they live in your territory. We just cannot help you, okay? You cannot ask any staff member of the boards to help you run your election in any way. They can't be your campaign manager, they can't make phone calls for you, they can't go around doing anything for you. So please be aware of that when you go out and try to hire people or ask people to volunteer, to help you out. Is that okay?
Yes. So Matt, you've got the ten signatures. You filed on September twenty-eighth at four P M. How do you get the vote out between September twenty-eighth and November fifth? Third, the fifth will be a little late.
It's a great, it's a great question, Jonathan. So there's a couple of things that I would recommend right away. And that's, you know, even before you actually put in your paperwork, you, you, you want to look around you and, and ask yourself, first of all, are my friends and family encouraging me to do this? Because if they're not, you really need to ask yourself why. But if they are, then you need to sell, to say to them, I, I'm gonna do this because I, I really want to, and I want you, and you guys want me to, but I'm gonna need your help. So no matter how big or small a race is gonna be, whether you're running for a, a school board or, or a municipal election, or, or you're running for parliament, or you're, you know, you've got aspirations to, to be the Prime Minister, you cannot do this alone. And trying to do it alone is a recipe for, for a really miserable experience. You're gonna need help. And there's no shame in asking. And so not only should you ask, you should ask a lot. Ask for more help than you think you could possibly need, because believe it or not, when push comes to shove, you're, you're gonna need it. You're gonna need all of it. Now, the help comes in all kinds of different forms. People will come to you and say, how can I help? And so the first thing you're gonna want to think about is, okay, what are the resources available to me in terms of humans around me who care about me and my ideas and want to see me do this thing and are supporting me? And, and there's all sorts of things that you're gonna need, one of which is, you're gonna need some money. People need to make donations. And the first couple of times you ask people, it is awkward. You know, because you're asking somebody for, like, it's not a huge donation we're talking about here, but it's still awkward to ask your friends and your family, would you, would you please write a check for me to put in a thing because I need money? But without some money to run your campaign on, you're, you're dead in the water. You can't do it for free. Certainly for things like signage. And then there's gonna be things like, that you don't even think about right, by, by the way. You're gonna need a bank account. And that bank account's gonna cost something. And it's gonna take you some time and some energy to get organized. You're gonna need, you know, really basic things like office supplies. You might decide that you want to put up a website or use a social media handle. All these things cost a little bit of money, and you have to keep track of all of them because all of them are expenses that you are allowed to incur, but you need to report them. And that comes to the next kind of help. You're allowed to have, or you should have, a, an official agent. This is the person who is going to actually double-check to make sure that you're doing everything properly, according to the law. They have to do a little training that is offered by the government of Quebec. It's, it's obligatory, so there, there is an online training system they have to do. It's not terribly difficult, but there's a lot of important information in there. And so you want to pick somebody who you know you can trust to listen carefully and learn exactly what they're supposed to do. Because if your official agent makes a big mistake and doesn't keep track of your expenses or your donations and, and file the right paperwork at the right time, whether you win or you lose, you're gonna have to answer for that. And if you win, you're gonna be busy, really busy. And if you, if you don't win, you might want to turn the page and, and move on to do something else. And this is gonna just have to pull you back to the, the time of the election, when it's time to file all the paperwork. And, you know, Lord help you, if the, if the, if the, the Director General of the Elections wants to review your documentation later on and ask you some pointed questions about exactly, how did this money get spent and where did it get spent, why did it get spent? And all of a sudden, you think to yourself, oh gee, I should have probably picked somebody who could keep track of receipts to, to be my official agent. This is a lesson I learned the hard way, because I chose myself to be my official agent. And I was, I was good enough at being a candidate to get elected, but I was a terrible official agent. And I created a whole lot of work for myself to do after the fact. Luckily, everything worked out all right. But this is a lesson I learned the hard way, and I encourage all of you not to repeat my mistake. Choose someone you can trust, choose someone who's better at keeping track of, of receipts and is more organized than you are. As a general rule, if you look around and you can say to yourself, I've got a spouse or a best friend or someone I can really trust, and they are smarter than me, that is a good choice for your official agent. It is frequently, it's also an important role where somebody who doesn't necessarily want to get up in the, you know, in, in front of a crowd at a debate or put their name forward can make a really meaningful contribution to this, to this exercise that you're about to, to undertake. And, and for the right person who enjoys this sort of thing, and there are a lot of them, it's a, it's a meaningful role in a campaign that can be a really, really important one. And so it's another way that we can all do some service to our community by serving as an official agent for, for a candidate. And then, of course, as you prepare to run, you're obviously, excuse me, gonna ask yourself, or you ought to know, why am I doing this? What is, what is it I'm trying to achieve? And if the answer you come up with is, I really love to hear myself talk, and I look, and I look good when I'm on a big screen in front of a bunch of people, you might want to keep thinking about it. But if the answer you come up with is that you want, you have a meaningful difference that you want to make, that there's, there's something that you can contribute. Now, whether that's a new policy idea or a new way of doing something, or that, you know, you know that you need responsible adults in your community to be looking after the important work of the school boards, and you think of yourself as one of those responsible adults, and you, you know you have good decision-making abilities and that you're a trustworthy person, those are good reasons to be running. Because at the end of the day, this is a lot of work. It's something you're gonna take very seriously, and it can frequently be very, very thankless. But you're doing something important for your community. So if you're doing it for the right reasons, it becomes incredibly rewarding. And if you're doing it for reasons that are not quite in line, you're going to get bored or upset pretty quickly. And once you've decided what it is that you're doing and why you're doing it, it's a really good idea, especially with your close ones, your friends and your family, to try to enunciate what those things are. Make a list, write them out, and try to explain them in as few words as possible. Because you're gonna be doing that over and over and over again as you go out and campaign and solicit votes. Because if the average person is gonna take a few minutes out of their day to listen to you and to remember you, and then weeks later, take even more time out of their, their day to go down to, you know, to the polling place and remember your name and check off your name on that, on that box, you need to be clear, lucid, and concise and persuasive. And if it's difficult for you to do that, you're gonna have a hard time. So it does take some practice. You know, it, it's, the thing about people who like to get elected, guys like me, is that we all like to, to talk a lot. And we, we may also want to not necessarily listen very much to those around us who are not necessarily up on the stage debating. But talking is important, listening is even more important, and being succinct, which I'm doing a terrible job at, at the moment, is probably the most important skill of all, because when you get somebody's attention, you're gonna have it for a few seconds, and then they're gonna move on with their day. And if you go on too long, they're not gonna remember you afterwards. They will remember that you were boring and, and you bothered them about something, and they're not gonna want to come out and vote for you. And finally, and, and I think there's another panelist who's gonna talk a little bit more about social media and, and what to do and how to do it. You may find yourself engaged with detractors. People who, for whatever reason, want to challenge you directly and may be very rude about whatever it is that they have to say. Sometimes, especially in the present political environment, there are a lot of folks who are very, very frustrated or, or angry with the circumstances of their own lives or with the way that various levels of government work. And if you are running as a candidate or you get elected, you then become a part of that system. And if you are right in front of them and you are a target for, to vent frustration, you're, you're gonna be on the receiving end of some of it. And so patience is important. Because in, in most cases, no matter how vitriolic somebody gets or how upset they get, the reason that they're speaking to you and speaking to you the way that they are fundamentally is because they're frustrated and they are just looking for somebody to listen to them. And that can be tough when they're being insulting directly to your face or telling you what you're doing is ridiculous or of, with a purpose or that you're a waste of space or any of the other things that people who are running for getting elected here all the time. You can't take it personally.
It's a good lead-in to Ricardo.
Exactly where I was going with this. So with that, I've taken up far too much of your time, but I thank you so much for listening to everything I had to say. But if anybody would like more information, would like to discuss this one-on-one, my information is available on the City of Westmount website, and I encourage you to shoot me an email. I'd be happy to talk to you further. Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, stay tuned, you're not off yet.
Oh, no, no, I'll stay to answer questions too.
Ricardo, pick up from there. What do you do? How do you use social media openly candidly? And how do you, what do you do when you're getting swayed?
But first, I just want to add a little bit of more of what, a little bit of what Matt said. So yes, fundraising is really important. As a former field organizer for the Liberal Party of Canada, I've worked on campaign across Quebec. And I've seen Quebec, I've seen campaigns with a lot of money and I've seen campaign with not a lot of money. But as Matt said, when you run, people will try to help you. They will contact you and say, oh, they can help you. And what I've found is a lot of people, a lot of candidates, never ask their close one for, for fundraising money. They never ask them, and this is the first step that I asked them to, that when I spoke to those candidates, that what they can do is to take their phone and go through their list of contacts and contact those people and ask them for, if they can help you for the, for the fundraising part of the campaign, since it's also a lot of important. But however, even if there's a lot of, you're in a campaign with a lot of money, you're in a campaign with not a lot of money, it doesn't change the fundamental that you need to speak to people. You need to go outside, you need to go knock on doors, you need to do some phone, phone calls to get those people's support, to get, to get yourself to be known in the community and get their support for the election. And I said that because a lot of people, I've seen a lot of candidates who doesn't want to do some door knocking and always ask me how I can do, how I can do less of the door-to-door of the phone calling by social media. And honestly, social media is not like, is not the magic answer that you need to win a campaign. Social, social media is a tool that you can use to spread your message. But I, I mean, at the end of the day, what's, what's gonna make you win an election is the door-to-door and call people. So in social media, when you're out there spreading your message, like Matt said, there's gonna be a lot of people who will be, who will be saying negative things about you or negative things about your platform. And what I'll always say to my candidate is that it will happen, it's okay. Do we have the time and the resources to respond to every single comment? Not really. So what I'm usually telling them is to keep pushing your message. If your message is good, people will still listen to it, and there will always be people in the comments saying negative things about what you have to say. But if you keep, if you keep pushing your message, there will be a lot of more people that will, that will hear it, hear it and will understand it and adhere to what you believe and actually come being a supporter of, of you. And once you have that, what I usually say to my campaigns, when, what I work in, is in social media, you can see also some positive message of people saying, oh yes, I will support you. But does that person really exist? That we don't really know. We have to verify it. And what I usually say is that on the rainy days, when nobody wants to go do some door knocking, use that time to find those names that you see on social media to see if they are in your electoral list. And if they are in your electoral list, pick up the phone, call them, and ask them, will you support me in the next election? And then you, then you transform a digital ID in a strong, real voter for you.
Thank you for that. What about, how important is it to have a website? How important is it on Twitter and X, sorry, Facebook and Instagram, those kinds of things?
I do believe it's important. I do believe it's important because you need visibility everywhere that you go. People will look at your name in every search engine, Google, and it's, try to find you. And also, it's a best way for them also to send you some messages. But also, like I've said, I, I think you should be on every platform advocating for what you believe, spread your message. But also, it doesn't, it doesn't cut the fact that you need to be in the field, door knocking, and pick up the phone and call voters.
Anything as a candidate, you want to comment on any, you must get blasted. How do you deal with it? Do you want to briefly come up and talk about how you deal with it on social media?
Read the comments. Yeah, I mean, look, I, I think school board is going to be running for federal parliament. I, I don't know that school board commissioner candidates need to have a visible presence on, on, on things like I, I don't know that school board commissioner candidates need to have a visible presence on, on, on things like X where you get all kinds of hate. Instagram and Facebook are much more polite and nicer generally than, than, than X. Um, and, and the only way that you avoid it, and it hurts every single time when people tell you how horrible you are, right? Is, is, is to not read the comments, which is very hard for somebody like me to do. Because somebody like me wants to be loved by everybody and it's horrible when you're not. So to me, like, yes, if you can be on X, don't read the comments. But I don't know, honestly, I, I'm telling you that I would say something very different if I was talking to people that would run it, running for federal parliament, provincial parliament, you have to be mayor or a councillor in a municipality. But I don't think school board commissioners need presences, uh, you know, on, on, on X. I don't think it's gonna change the results of the election. What you need to do is the way to win for your council job, any school board, is to hit every door in, 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 in the district. That is how you win. Just like I won when I ran for council for the first time when I was in my early twenties. Nobody necessarily knew me in the town in Hampstead, we lived in Dollar. We moved there when I was eighteen years old. I, I ran a couple of years later. I knocked on every door in the town. And that's how you win. And that, that would be my number one advice. And it's nice to have a website and it's nice to have a presence on Facebook and it's nice to be on Instagram, knocking on doors is the way you win.
Yes, Judy.
Uh, I have a question. If you're running for Chair of a school board.
So they can hear you on, uh, the teams.
Thank you, Judy Kelly, Chair of Lusby Pearson School Board. If you're running for the Chair of the School Board, you cannot knock on every door. And the reason is that you think of the territories, as Russell described, territory he's now Director General for, or I think of Lusby Pearson School Board that runs from Verdun to the Ontario border. It's not possible. So although for commissioners who are running for particular wards, they have their lists, they can, they can sort through it. Still an awful lot of work and a lot of time to go door-to-door. But there are ways to send out pamphlets or to send out materials and maybe have some little town halls, that kind of thing. But I have a question, which is, how does a chairperson reach everyone in the territory that they are running for? Uh, it's really a very difficult thing to do. So I'm wondering if anyone has any tips for us on that, that does not include, you were saying, you know, social media? Maybe some other forms of, of communication? What could they be? And we'd really appreciate your help on that, I think.
Ricardo, talk first.
Uh, I don't have all the answers, but what I used to say to my candidates, like in a large, um, rural riding, is, uh, what I always say is like, door-to-door is the best, but you cannot go everywhere. So I keep, uh, I keep the door-to-door on the more urban center of the, of the, um, of your territory that you have to cover. And for, for the rest, I usually say to the candidates, pick up the phone and call them. Try to call every single one of them. And also, uh, you can mail in your pamphlets to, uh, all the address that you actually have in your electoral list.
Right, Anthony wanted to comment on that, so I'll write him up again.
Oh, sure.
Before, before he does, one of the things that helps in that is you have, uh, if you're running in a party or on a slate. And then your candidate who's running the particular territory can do part of the door.
Yeah, I just. So obviously you've got both husband and his son, they could talk to you about this. But, um, I, look, I, I didn't mean it for the Chair when I thought that it was realistic to go door-to-door. I was talking about in an urban environment for a district, you know, commissioner seat. That is feasible. For the Chair, it's obviously not. So, but the thing is, we have contained lists for the English School Board that won't change from the time the period begins till it ends. That, that list is something that people can be working on, um, ver- very well by number one, mailing to all of the homes and having a professional pamphlet that goes out to them with very clear objectives of why they should vote for you. Number two, using the list and calling the list. Those are the way to reach, if these people are committed enough to get onto the school, onto the school board list. All those who are not parents, they're likely voters. I would distinguish between the parents and everybody else because everybody else was important. It felt that it was important enough to go register on that list, they're the most likely to turn out. The parents, you get supporters in all the different schools within the district. You find people at each of the different schools within the district who will be your campaign chair for that school. They should be reaching out on your behalf to all of the parents. You can do it class by class. What I would do is I would organize it grade by grade throughout the schools, um, to, to get people that are committed to you at the ground level and reach out on your behalf. To me, that's like in Twitter, so somebody in Calgary is gonna see you. It's not gonna help you necessarily. But the way to reach the people on that list, which is a very confined list, even in Pearson, it's, you know, I, I would imagine it, it's not more than thirty, forty thousand people. I, I, I would imagine you have, how many, twenty-nine thousand students, twenty-eight thousand students? So, sorry, fifty-six thousand based on Russell's math, plus whoever else gets on it. So it's about sixty-five to seventy thousand, maybe maybe seventy-five thousand people. Really, it's granular level for the schools and it's getting a mailing out to everybody. And you gotta raise the money for that. So sorry for the, for the, I, I was just as bad as mad on that. But I do really believe it's important for people to have an idea of what confronts you. It's not an easy thing to run for Chair of a big board like Pearson or EMSB. That is a very big challenge. It's just like if you were running for provincial or federal politics. Um, and, and so that is a challenge. Uh, sorry for being loquacious.
I'm glad I'm not the only one, though. Boy.
All right, Catherine, you get the last question.
Two other people that had questions.
All right, there are three questions and then we're calling it a day.
Smithen, my question was an answer for Judy.
Sorry?
My question wasn't a question, it was an answer for Judy about the, how do you get your message? Well, it's okay, you answered it eventually.
I wanna talk about finances. So I heard Anthony just say right now, you know, you need the money for it. So can I just hit up my very rich parents and ask them for money? Like, how does it work? How does it work? How does it, how much are you allowed to spend? How do you spend?
There are budgets, like, how do you know?
I just gave you the limits of spending. And for a chairperson, if you're running for a chairperson, you only have about three thousand dollars, thirty-eight hundred dollars plus thirty cents per student or per voter in your territory. So if you have, if you have sixty thousand voters, that gives you a rough idea of how much you're allowed there. For a commissioner, you have eighteen hundred dollars plus thirty cents per voter in your territory. So in your ward. So it's, it could be eight thousand, it could be six thousand, it could be ten thousand. Some of our awards are up to ten, but the majority of our awards are about around an average thirty thousand. That's, that's the, that's how much you're allowed to spend. Those are your limits.
But where you, Mike, I guess my question is, where's the money come from? Can I use my own?
For donations. You can get gifts, you can get donations. You can have, uh, you can, but as you always, as, as Matt was saying, make sure that all your donations are marked somewhere. Make sure you have names of all these people that donated for you. Because if, if something happens, you will be considered voter fraud the next time and you won't be allowed to run in the next election. But I'm sure, I'm sure Ricardo has some, maybe some ideas on that, if federal or provincial.
If, if, if I may, I would also recommend just double-check what the limit that each individual donor that's giving you money is allowed to give you in any given year. Uh, you know, for, for municipal elections, it was, I think it was a hundred dollars a year. Uh, but you were allowed to finance some part of your campaign. I believe it was, I think in, for municipal elections, it was somewhere around eighteen hundred dollars that you could, that you could donate to your own campaign. Uh, or, you know, and then, and there are some rules around whether, if you need to borrow some money. Um, and you can borrow it from yourself, you can borrow it from a member of the community. But there's very strict rules about how and when you pay that money back out of your campaign funds. So, you know, it's, it's extremely detailed. And I'm sure that the, the booklet that is, that is available here goes through all of those rules. And this is something that your, uh, your, your official agent will also be responsible for maintaining all of those records and knowing what those rules are, which is why I said you really need somebody who knows, you know, their way around a, a calculator and a spreadsheet for that particular role.
Definitely. Matt's right about that. And I think you can, you can put up to seven hundred dollars of your own monies into your campaign.
Kim, you wanna shed some light on this?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something, that all of the materials are available on the QESBA website. We'll email out the documentation to all the people that were registered tonight. Um, and for those of you interested in running in the fall, there are training sessions offered by the Zinni D'Algena, Zinni D'Algena, the Zinni D'Algena of Quebec on financing specifically. Because it is very detailed, but they offer wonderful financing. So those questions will all be answered for you by them.
I was gonna say that, Kim, yes. But they did an excellent job last election in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, on the Q E S B A election. They, uh, everything was done online and the gentleman that gave that, uh, that, uh, training was fantastic. He, he really was able to tell everyone exactly what to do to get the money, to spend the money, to take, to keep notes of the money and all that. So, yeah, and like that way, no problems when you came to make your report. Cuz you have to make a report to your returning officer, to me, and I have to make that report to the Director General of Elections. And if those reports have any kind of inconsistency in them, they will come back to us. And they were coming back to us as, I only had one election at Lusby last year. And they came back to us and the election is finished November third or whatever. And they came back to us till January the next year in twenty twenty-two, still asking questions about the Commissioner's expense report. And I'm going, it was, she barely spent three hundred dollars.
I posted, no, I do. Yeah, so you really have to be careful, as Matt said, you have to be careful.
Welcome, more on the topic. Important thing to note, the other thing you gotta be really careful about is when you put out, uh, pamphlets or signage, they have to, they have specifically have to be approved by your, 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 uh, your agent. And you gotta be really careful to make sure that they all have the special little wording at the bottom of them, in the little corner of the thing that says that they've been approved and that, that lists the specific printer that printed them if you paid for them to print it. These are incredibly fine little detailed rules. You're gonna, you're gonna have to spend some time doing some homework on these things. We don't have to spend every, you know, too much time tonight on it. But just to say, go through the fine print of those guides. It's gonna help you to make sure you don't make a mistake out of the gate. That'll cost you a lot of time and energy when you should be out talking to the voters.
Okay. So I'm gonna wrap it up. We're over time. Thank you, Matt, thank you, Ricardo, thank you, Rosemary. And then we'll call on David Malosh, the executive director, president?
Executive Director.
The SBA to have the final word.
So easy having the final word at nine, ten, right? But, uh, I'll, I'll let you know that, uh, what an incredibly rich, motivating and inspirational evening. Most times around this time, the energy level's going down.
Not in this group.
Up high, so, uh, uh, I'm so glad that we, we, we recorded it. So as Kim mentioned, uh, we, we did take the entire discussion. Uh, that's gonna be posted on the Q S B A site. We will also distribute it to all school boards, parents and community organizations. We'll send you the link so that you can then disseminate it. What Catherine Snow pointed out, uh, at one of the comments when she was, uh, asking questions, it's all about public awareness. And you are the best ambassadors to use the passion you feel now to disseminate that information so that people know about it. Uh, this evening couldn't have happened with incredible leadership and engagement of so many people. So I, I definitely want to thank English Montreal School Board, its Director General, Nick Talafos, and Executive Assistant, uh, Lauren Cesari, uh, for all the behind-the-scenes work. Uh, we have Chris and Christian for our technical support today. Thank you very much. Uh, congratulations. Congratulations to, uh, the organizing crew. So, uh, Q S B A's Kim Hamilton, our amazing M C and host, Jonathan Goldblum, Suzanne Keo, for all the administrative support. Thanks to our incredible guests and very passionate pleas by Member of Parliament, uh, from Mount Royal, uh, and Mr. Anthony Husfathers. Q S B A presidents. Official enthusiastic moderator and, my former predecessor, Russell Copman. And the, the insightful sharing of knowledge, Catherine, Noel, Stephen, Rosemary, Matt and Ricardo. Close that, really the vitality of any community is really based on three things in my mind. Commitment, courage and care. Committed to go and do things for the greater good, to support your local community, to support the English network. Courage to stand up, to exercise the rights that we have as an English minority. And care, do everything we can for school boards and student achievement. So I really, uh, implore on everyone, all of us and challenge all of us as committed, courageous and caring community to get out there and set a record-high voting rate this year.
Story.
That is our mission. Thank you so much and your participation was amazing tonight.